Alright, folks, at seven o'clock, if you'll stand, we will be led in prayer by Commissioner Brown, and then the meeting will be opened.
And we pray, most gracious God, we come in the name of Jesus. Most of all, I want to say thank you for this day, this moment. And then, God, we thank you for those that are in attendance tonight. We pray, God, that you would take the lead of our mind, that we will do things that you will be pleased with. Heavenly Father, I just sense you bless our mayor, Commissioner, Attorney. And I want to submit, Father, by saying, bless all under the sound of my weak voice, for we all stand in the need of you. Bless the sick and the shed in, all of those on our land and our country. Heavenly Father, I want to end the prayer by saying, Lord, thank you. You've been good to us. You've been better to us, Father, than we've been ourselves. Lord, help hold us together. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will now be officially opened by Sheriff Austin Swing. Is he here? Or is... yeah, there he is.
Hear ye, hear ye, the Bedford County Board of Commissioners is now in session. The Honorable Mayor, Chad Graham, is presiding.
Thank you. You can be seated. Alright, so this is a special call meeting, so it'll be strictly the items related to the budget that was posted in advance for your review. Can everybody hear us out in the audience? Okay, great. We want to make sure everybody understands what's going on. Alright, we got roll call by County Clerk Donna Thomas.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Brothers. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Castleman. Commissioner Epperson.
Here.
Commissioner Farrar.
Here.
Commissioner Ferris. Commissioner Fox. Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
Commissioner Pinson.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Julie Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Commissioner Yaki.
Here.
Eighteen present, zero absent.
Alright, first item on the agenda is budget amendments for 2122. Should have just come out of the committee for you guys to have the final version of that.
Move to approve.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. Open for discussion or comments?
Just both the school and the...
Where's Robert? Yes, they're together. It is both. And I'll remind you, press your button when you speak, so it come through the mic. Alright, here are no questions. All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Alright, next is budget resolutions for 2223. So the first resolution is 23-1. It's a resolution fixing the tax levy in Bedford County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning in July 1, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
Alright. Did you get that? Alright, so we got a motion and a second. We're open for discussion. This would be setting the property tax rate.
Okay, and what is that right?
County General, according to this document, is $1.10. Highways would be 6 cents. General purpose schools would be 62 cents. General debt service would be 15 cents. County capital projects is 3.52, making the tax rate the same as currently at 1.9652. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Vick.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of opening comments. And let me thank the Finance Department staff for the work they've done, and the Finance Committee. Mayor, thank you for the work you've done. All of us here on the Commission were elected. We're all leaders, but one of the first thing you have to know if you want to be a leader, a true leader, is that it begins with two thoughts and beliefs. And the first is, the future can be better than the present. The second is, we have the power tonight to make it so. And for too long, we've made decisions based on fear and reluctance to change, and that's so wrong. Instead, we need to base every single decision on hope and on possibility, and our decisions tonight need to be based on what should happen, not what shouldn't happen. Every successful business, every single successful person always makes their decisions based on where they want to be, where they want to go, and a plan on how they want to get there. And so tonight, we're going to have two options available to us. We can be productive and make progress towards reaching these goals, or we can be distracted and make excuses as to why we can't. But we all need to realize there's one important thought. And what we allow here tonight by our actions and our votes is exactly the path that we're going to continue on. This has been an exciting and interesting week. I've had the opportunity to meet and talk to a lot of county employees, business people, and many of you out in the audience tonight. I talked to Johnny. He's a deputy with the Sheriff's Office. He and his wife Pam, they have two kids. She worries about Johnny if he'll come home to her. And kids worry about him, too, if he's unharmed after his shift is over. She told me he needs bulletproof vests and proper working radio equipment. And she watches the news, and she reads about what's happening throughout the country. And she told me she sure hopes we don't defund the police in our county. And then I talked to Dwayne, and he's a volunteer fireman. He has a full-time job, but he just loves being a fireman. He said he doesn't do it for the money. He thinks he's helping his neighbors in Bedford County. But those expenses for his uniforms and his gas are just eating into his paycheck, and his wife wants him to stop doing it because it's so dangerous. But he says, "These are my neighbors, and these are my friends, and they're counting on me." Then I talked to Bonnie, and she's two works for the county. She's a single mom. Her husband passed away a couple of years ago. She loves her job, and she works hard, but she needs to make more money. She's got a son. He's going to middle school next year, and now she has to take care of her older parents. And she's been offered higher-paying jobs in other counties, but then she'd have to travel, and she couldn't be near her parents, and they need her. She told me, she said, "Commissioner, why can't the county help us with our pay? Every other county's going up. Why can't we?" She told me, she told her son that they'd go to Disney World on vacation next year because they didn't have the money. Then she told him, "I know I told him that last year, too." These are people from the business... There are people here from the business community as well, executives and builders and developers, people who create value and opportunity. They've seen these past four years as promising as the future for a county that was stagnant, that refused to change, and now they see hope and they see opportunity. And they found a way to create a lasting impact by creating new business opportunities through economic development. Imagine how they felt when I told them that this budget cuts all that out. After we spent four years convincing them we were changing our past, now we're going to go backward. This current national economy, it doesn't have anything to do with us. We don't have any control over that. We've seen these four-year high rate of inflation, the supply chain, the shortages, the increasing gas, the fuel, the pressure points, the competition for job, the wages. Our current tax rate of $1.97 is not sufficient to address any of these. It doesn't address the rapidly escalating costs that critical needs are being magnified by the current employment crisis and financial situation. We had a study, Personnel Executive Study. We took a look at EMS, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, codes and planning, IT. And the finding found that our employees' salaries are 22% below the market value. That doesn't mean everybody gets a 22% raise. That means that we're underpaying 22% to correct it. Our emergency medical services, if we don't make some adjustments there, we're going to have to convert to basic life support. And let me tell you what that means. For those out there, that means that we're going to have to cut personnel because we can't pay them. We got an email just the other day from Wilson County. Their starting salary for EMS is $67,500, plus paid family health care, plus vacation, plus all the amenities that go with it. And ours is $42,500. We're not even close. And then on the July 2nd, they're going to go up another 15%, like everybody else. But when we go to basic life support, that means there's no pain medication, there's no cardiac service, there's no narcotics, there's just advanced first aid. When we start de-staffing and shutting down, you know what's going to happen next. They're going to have to close the stations. That means longer wait time for an ambulance. That means if you're in one part of the county, you're waiting on an ambulance, and if there's two calls, they're going to have to make a choice. And you're going to have to look at your father, who's on his way to the hospital, and take that phone call that's going to say, "I'm sorry, your father died on the way to the hospital because we didn't have a defibrillator." Or, "Your son's in a car wreck, and he didn't have blood, and he bled out." And I'll tell you the worst one that really gets me, is we get the call, and it says, "There's an active shooter, and we don't have enough emergency vehicles to take care of it." What are we going to do then? And don't think it doesn't happen. Ask those people in Texas three weeks ago. They said it would never happen there in New York and California. Folks, these people have experienced a 68% turnover. Pay pressure is just brought on over and over. Rutherford County's going up 20%. Smyrna's 20%. Coffee County, 30%. EMS being paid. Lincoln County, $61,568. Grundy County, $56,000. Cannon County, $54,000. Wayne County, $53,000. Coffee County, $53,000. We're at $49,000. Our Highway Department, we've got a 55-mile paving program. If we can't keep up with the cost of the materials and the lubricants and the fuel, we're going to go down to 15 to 20 miles. How are we going to fill the potholes? How are we going to pave the rightways? How are we going to do all this and lay off people? What are we going to do about our garbage service? Our industrial development? We finally got things moving out there. We're going to cut out all the funding for our grants? All we're funding it with is $100,000 in this budget. $100,000 from a motel motel. I know the mayor has worked hard. We've got $200,000 for our one grant, but we need another $200,000. And we need to fund our partnership. Our Fire Department over there, our Fire Chief Mark Thomas has found a creative way to see if we can't get some volunteers to help us. We need $91,000 just to help us keep some volunteers and find some ways to do that. We've got 438 people that work for us, 360 full-time, 78 part-time, and they're all underpaid. And they're here tonight to tell you, "We want to be part of the county. We're part of the team. We're here as part of the team, but please help us. Please be part with us." This study wasn't just about Rutherford County and Davidson County and Knox County. It was about comparative markets to us. Are we lagging? Are we matching? And are we leading in our pay scale? And we're lagging in every single one of these components. There's been talk about, "Well, we want to set the pay scale. The people on the high end, they don't need to get a pay raise, and the people on the low end need to get a pay raise." Well, that's all well and good, but the... Under the 81 Act, the Tennessee Code 521123 specifically says the county commission does not set salaries or determine the needs of these departments. Here's the code. So we're arguing about something we have no control over. The mayor has the control over that. Our EMS, he's here tonight. Our director's here. Over the weekend, I had him talk to some of our business people who are just astonished at where we are with that. Four years ago, we walked into this very room, this very room, and the carpets were all rolled up, chairs and the tables ramshackled around, the paint's peeling off, and the lights about half on. And we were immediately hit with four problems right off the bat. We had a school that was over budget and behind schedule. We worked on that, and we got it open on time. We had a jail, a judicial center that was over budget and behind schedule. And thanks to Commissioner Sweeney, we were able to get it on time, thanks to several commissioners and our judicial officers over there and members of our county employees. We managed to have this seamless operation from the old jail to the new jail, not before the state came in there and slapped us. Commissioner Anderson remembers that conversation when they popped us for another million dollars. But we got that done. Then we had our annex building, and we got that done. And we saved $50,000 in a rent payment that was due right across the street. And none of this would have been possible without our county employees that worked as a team to help us. I watched them take file cabinets across the street. And things we finally... This came right out of the gate. And finally, we thought we had a breather. Then all of a sudden, this disease hit, COVID. And it hit hard, and it shut down our businesses. It shut down everything. And we looked up, and we even lost a member of our own commission in line of duty right here. Commissioner Patterson died. And we didn't know what to do, but our county employees did, and they found creative ways. And Johnny Reed in the Register of Deeds office found a way to do remote recording. And Donna Thomas found a way in the Clerk's office to keep marriage certificates and car tags going. And Tanya Davis found a way down the Trustee's office so we could collect and keep our money straightened out. And Rhonda found a way to make sure our assessment was done. And Chris White found a way in codes to make sure we still had our building inspections going. And all of our county employees just worked, and they found ways to do it in the midst of all this. And our teachers, our county employee teachers, somebody forgot to tell them they couldn't come to work because they showed up. They showed up at school, and you know what they did? They came and fed those kids and made sure their little bellies were full during COVID when they couldn't come to school and they couldn't eat. That's what your county employees do. That's why they're there for us. And in the middle of all this, when they told us nothing could happen, and the governor wasn't going to give any money for projects, what did Pat Marsh and Shane Reeves do? They got the only capital improvement for the largest Bedford County grant in the history of Bedford County, $43 million. What did our Finance Committee do up there with the mayor? And members of our Finance Committee, they went to the bond market and refinanced our bonds and got the lowest rate we've ever had on bonds. That's what our county commission does, and that's what we try to do. We are working for everybody. And now we've finally come to the end of this four-year term, and we're in this same room right now. But four years ago was all ramshackled, and look at it now. Look where we are. Look what we've done. This is what we can accomplish as a team with our county employees and a county commission that's forward-looking, a county commission and leadership that moves us into the next century, that doesn't take no for an answer, that finds ways, creative ways, to improve and make things better. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's why we can't go back. We can't take $1.97. We have to pay our employees. We have to keep up our economic development. Because if we don't, all we're doing is putting more and more tax burden on the property owners, and we've got to expand this tax base. I can't express to you how much I appreciate the work the Finance Committee has done and how much leadership the mayor has shown. And it's nothing about the members. It's just, we can't do this. We have to have a better way. And I have a better plan. I have a better option to do that with. Ladies and gentlemen, I would urge you, please don't accept this $1.97. I have a better plan right here. I'm ready to do it. Plan is not hope. Hope is not a plan. We have to have a plan. I have a plan that I would like to submit to you, but let's debate this first, and let's get this out of the way. Mr. Mayor, I would strongly encourage my colleagues, please vote no on this $1.97 tax levy. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Alright, so there is a motion and a second on the floor for the $1.9652, and we are open for discussion. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Yes, sir, I certainly do.
Please do.
This is a long process. It should take over two or three months. And unfortunately, this year's been shortened a week or two for most commissioners. I did make it to the Budget and Finance meeting. It said May 24th. I had May 26th. I don't... it doesn't matter. I was there, and I listened to our Finance Director go over line by line, the general fund, and it was good. But I didn't have a budget book. I couldn't ask questions. I couldn't see where the revenues were. Now, I know our revenues increased. The first question that I'd asked the Budget and Finance people, and I know it increased some. Where was... I don't know how many pennies. It'd be interesting to find out and exactly where that money go. And obviously, EMS should have been atop the list, and I don't believe it was. Now, that's not... That honestly isn't on all the safety commissioners. That comes out of Budget and Finance. I didn't hear anybody putting EMS up at the top to get raises at that meeting or the one on June the 7th either. So I don't know where the fault lies. I don't know if it's all on Budget and Finance. I don't know where it is. But I remember the last question they asked at the June 7th meeting to the Finance Director, "Budget going to be balanced?" And my learned colleague, Commissioner Vick, that's the number-one thing in this country, is to have a balanced budget. And Ronald Reagan is, as you Republicans, a legacy. And there's three things that he believed in. And he had very conservative principles. And the first one is free enterprise with a market economy. Number two is limited government. And number three is low taxes. That's honest. And the problem with, if you're going to increase it 43 cents, then you got to... I don't have a prepared list of all the inflation problems with farmers and elderly people that own farmland and all that other. But if I'd known I had to listen to your long diatribe, I would have tried to refute the problems of property owners in this county. Now, I'm first in line for raises for EMS. My question is, why wasn't first in line in the Budget and Finance back, you know, June the 7th or May 26th or in April? That's where this should start, and it should be in open, in sunshine, open in sunshine. Now, the last thing I remember Robert saying, because the Commissioner, another Commissioner asked him, "Is this budget balanced?" He said, "No, new taxes." Now, we just heard the other meeting with them. Again, no new taxes. And obviously, that's exactly what I'm going to do. But I want to read the Sunshine Law because I didn't have privy to this letter we got from County Mayor of wanting to increase our taxes by 43 cents. So somehow missed that. But I do want to read the Sunshine Law to everyone else here. I did read it at the Rules Committee. I'm going to read it for here and everyone else in the audience. Because I don't know if these four requirements have been met. Number one, these are requirements of the Act. All meetings of governing body are declared to be public meetings. Number two, adequate public notice of all regular and special meetings must be given. I must have missed some of these. Number three, the minutes of the meetings must be recorded and open for public inspection. I haven't seen any of those meetings yet from this 43-cent increase. And the last one is, all votes must be public vote. I don't know how this even came about because it wasn't in the sunshine. Now, it says here, and this is the Sunshine Law, Open Meetings Act, "Any action taken in a meeting in violation of any foregoing requirements is void." Now, I would have been appreciative if I could have been involved in... Some of you on the Budget Finance didn't make privy to this meetings either. Now, I don't know where they met. I don't know if it matters or not, but I don't think the sun shined on it. Now, I'm for increases. I'm for increases in the Fire Department, EMS, and E911. I'm pretty sure we gave the COVID money quite a bit to 911 and radio. I don't know where all that went, but we can sit here and talk about it if we want to because there's a lot of other questions I've got in the budget that haven't been answered yet. Of course, I've got shuffled under so many other things. But I am very hesitant to vote for something that hadn't met the Sunshine Law. I just can't vote for an increase that's gone about in this pattern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate that. If you could shine light on the specific meeting that you're referring to and who was there, that'd be helpful.
You tell me. Where did this letter of 43-cent increase come from?
Well, I wrote that letter. And as the mayor, I can write a letter. I don't need anybody else to do that, sir. And what I pointed out to you is, these are needs that are not met in the current budget structure. That's what the letter says.
Okay. Well, it's in the structure now. You're asking for a vote of it, and we were...
No, I'm making you aware of it so that you won't have the ability to come back and say you never knew that we had crisis going on.
But in public meetings, we have to be there. All 18 commissioners have to be told about it, and it needs to be discussed.
You were all given... This come from the mayor's office, sir. This is not from a committee. This did not come from committee. This come from the mayor's office. The mayor's office can make a direct comment to any commissioner and all of the commissioners, sir. This was not a committee issue. Commissioner Thomas.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. As far as I know, nobody's offered amendment of 43 cents at all at this point.
No, it was for...
This is... I mean...
It was for your information. That's correct.
I mean, we're talking about $1.95. If somebody, I reckon, can offer an amendment to that at this point, if they choose to do so, but I'm not aware of that. And let me ask...
So we're aware of the current tax rate.
Since you're talking about the Sunshine Law, let me ask you this. Is going on social media and talking about the budget and agreeing that you're not going to vote for a budget, is that not a violation of Sunshine Law as well?
That is in the public.
Were we given notice? Who gave notice of that meeting? I wasn't... I didn't even know it happened until everybody out here started telling me about it.
It was in public. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Commissioner Gallagher.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, I know that some of the other commissioners, like I have, on the last several days since this all came up, I've really agonized over it, and I really have. It's a difficult situation to be put in. And in one aspect of it, it just ticks me off that this hit right at the last moment. The wage and salary study came after we had already presented the budget at the Finance Committee. The wage and salary study came after we had already presented the budget at the finance committee. You know, we've not had time to really study it, and that's what it is, a study. Even though I know that the employees, EMS, sheriff, animal control, all those people who get up in the morning, who do the day-to-day routines, who make this county tick and work and function like it should, are underpaid. But we've talked about that the last few years, really, how we needed to do something about it. And unfortunately, that study came in like the 11th hour, and we hadn't had time to look at it. So what can you say? Any business, the most important asset that you have are the employees who work for that business, that make it tick. And when I see in that report that the average experience of an EMS person is one and a half years, it sends cold chills up my spine. It really does. That, more than anything else, identifies the problem that we have. You know, I know people out in the county are suffering because of inflation, and who knows where that's going to head? People have a hard time going to the grocery store and buying the things that they need. It's not a reasonable price anymore. And if you're on a fixed income, it makes it very difficult. So it's a balancing act between what we're going to do in terms of raising taxes and how we're going to not put an extra burden on the people who live in this county. I know there's some things that I saw that was being proposed as part of that 43 cents that I think we didn't have to have. I mean, there was this, you know, like I think seven cents for inflation. Well, we all suffer inflation, and I know that means we're not going to be able to pave half the amount of roads that we did in prior years because of the cost of materials. But I think a lot of people might say, well, I can suffer a pothole or two this year if we have to, instead of having a tax rate increase. I know there's embedded within that funding for a lobbyist. Even though that's a wonderful thing, I think it may be a little bit extreme right now. It's not necessarily what we need. The industrial park is a wonderful thing. We need to be doing everything we can to keep the momentum going. But the idea that, you know, we got this grant, and nobody said anything about match until the 11th hour again, where did that come from? Why wasn't that at the finance committee? So we could discuss it and look within the budget and try to find the funding for that? It's a perplexing problem. It really is. And if we're going to, you can't just turn your back on it. You've got to confront it. But if we're going to confront it this evening, even though it should have been confronted at a finance committee meeting earlier, where we'd had time to really study it and do it in a proper way, that's one of the things that really bothers me. This process has not been in the form that it should have been. This should have come through the finance committee. We should have debated it then. We should have done what we needed to do while we were working on the budget. That's not anybody's particular fault. I guess it's just how it happened. But it makes me no less angry that it did. What I would like to see, if Commissioner Vick wants to make an amendment to this proposal of a $1.96 rate, is that we do it item at a time. Break that 43 cents down, so that we can prioritize, even though this isn't the best way of doing it, that we can prioritize what we want to vote on, that we can say, this is most important for us, and this isn't. Because we have to factor in how it's affecting just the individuals in this county when you vote on something. I'll get off my soapbox now.
No problem. Thank you for your comment. I would say that the letter did come from me. The budget process is like we've done every year since I've been your mayor, and that's we put a balanced budget before this body, and we stipulate what was put in the budget from request, and we stipulate what did not get funded in the budget for your review and consideration. And year after year, this body has never stepped up at this level to do anything, to add anything extra to the budget. And so therefore, that's why the letter is here. And this is simply for your information. It is the prerogative of this body. You set the tax rate, not the mayor. But it is my responsibility to make you aware of critical issues that are not addressed in that budget, and that's what this letter did. So if I would be the blame for the letter, it has nothing to do with any particular committee. It is the role of the mayor to keep the commission informed, and that's exactly what I did. And so if that was offensive to those, I apologize for that. It couldn't be any more offensive than people running out of this room, straight to social media, talking like an expert, and then come to a meeting and claim they don't know anything. So that's, it's unfortunate, but it does happen.
I didn't mean to make it sound like I was offensive.
I understand. But it's been said. But, all right. Anybody else? Next, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, when we vote here in a minute for this rate, so if we say yes, then we're going to go at 1.96, and it's override.
Yeah, the motion on the floor is for 1.96, which is the current rate, correct?
Okay. Now, just take a little different tack. When I first got elected to Bedford County Commission eight years ago, we were 74th or 78th in taxes. Shelby County was number one, being highest. Eight years later, we're now 21st in taxes, it's come up that much. If we raise taxes tonight, just going to get it out there, that'll be two years in a row, whether we did it or not, taxes went up three times in the last four years and four times in the last six years. And we are facing economic times that have not been seen in this country since the 70s. Gas and diesel are at an all-time high, approaching double-digit inflation. I do not think it's fiscally responsible to raise taxes during these economic times. I'm not against giving raises, just like I wouldn't four years ago. I'm just against raising taxes to give them. I do not see how any of us could look a senior citizen constituent in the eye, who's on a fixed income, their social security's not going up, the price of their medicine's going through the roof, they can't go get a job and get more money. I don't see how we can look at them and say it's good for them. I urge my commissioners to vote no on any tax increase. And there's some things in this book that I'd like to question. But the ballot, as Robert says, this thing's balanced, and I'm going to go ahead and vote for it. And thank you for letting me read my statement. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, Julie Sanders.
I believe we did, if I'm not mistaken, we did lower the tax rate last year, not increase it after we did the reappraisal. So I think right now that our tax rate's lower than it was...
It is. It was 256. It went to 266. It was raised 10 cents because of the state stepping in about the employees.
Anybody in this room not pay more last year? I mean, come on.
Yeah, but that wasn't your rate, sir. That was the value of your property went up.
But I'm just saying, it didn't matter.
Yeah, but just be clear about it. It was not a tax increase.
But the taxes still went up.
Yeah, sure. And it would under a tax freeze as well. Because if your property value changes, the amount you pay changes. If your value goes down, your amount would go down, sir. I mean, that, we don't control that. But we do control the rate. This body right here sets the rate, and the rate has only had the change up whenever it came to actually adding the 20 positions that the state said you had to have to fund the jail. And then we actually lowered the rate from 266 down to 1.9652 with the reappraisal. So the rate that, when you came into office four years ago was 256, it is now 1.96.
But you're paying more in taxes. Anybody can look at it and say...
And I don't dispute that. But the statement that we raised the tax rate is not correct.
It's actually...
Yeah, because their property value went up. That's the only way that happens. And I don't have any way to control that. I'm sure they would want their property to be sold for the top value if they were selling it.
Yes, President Mayor, if I'm not out of order, I think that we all need to think and consider tonight. We train people here in Bedford County. They're educated here in Bedford County. When they leave here and go elsewhere to get a job, but yet they live here. Since that we certainly do not want a wheel tax, we are elected by the people. They voted it down. There is no other way we can go but a property tax. Now, you think about our children, 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 children. The standard that we set tonight, or this evening, they're going to have to live with it. So I said to each of us that are here tonight, we don't need to think about right now, but we need to think about the future. We need to think about the future. I'm repeating, our children, children, children. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sylvia Pinson.
Okay. I have spent a whole week, but let me tell you, the heart of this county is the employees. You don't compensate them, they will leave. And if we don't do something and keep them here, we are in trouble, because services have got to be met. So ladies, commissioners, we need to do something for the employees.
Commissioner Ferris, Brian Ferris.
And I understand there's not been an amount put on the floor yet.
The motion and second on the floor is for a no-tax increase rate of $1.9652.
Okay, well, I've heard 43 cents, and I'm taking it that's an assumption.
That's based on the letter that I wrote, breaking out what I said areas that were not addressed, and what it would, my expectation is what it would take to address those. But you can set the rate at anything you like for it to be.
Well, I would echo part of what Commissioner Gallagher said. I believe there's things there that we can do without. I'm not in favor of a lobbyist. Quite frankly, I've had it up to here with industrial parks, and we need just a little more, and we need just a little more, and we're this close, and we're this close. I think it's time for somebody, I think this body in the four years that I've been here has made a commitment to that project. We have been solidly committed to it. And I think it's time that whomever, wherever, project whatever, make a commitment to this county. Then we can discuss more money. Right now, I feel like there's two in the bush, and I'm really like to have one in the hand before we get to talking about more money for economic development, for industrial parks, all of that. Employee raises, I'll go ahead and address it. The things that Commissioner Vick stated, myself, Commissioner Thomas, we've lived that life for a very long time. And I don't know about Commissioner Thomas, but I'm at the tail end of mine. When I look around, and employee raises are not, and I think there's a misunderstanding. We're not talking just EMS, just fire, just law enforcement. I heard a comment the other day that probation, where they're just paper pushers, they don't need anything. Well, if they're not there to push the papers, that means those people are going to be locked up in jail. So, you know, choose your poison. Which way do you want to pay for them? Clerk's office, the employees there, and, you know, the job they do. And I've heard that paper pushers don't need raises. And I cannot determine what is a paper pusher. I do reports. Does that make me a paper pusher? I believe we need to consider everybody, and everybody, employees, the highway department. I don't want to be out there on that truck, spreading that hot mix, days like we've had. I'm not interested in doing that at all. I'll take my chances of getting shot at. It's a lot safer. But we need to include everybody and not lose sight of county employees. I think the spotlight is shining on strictly public safety, and that's not it. It's all-inclusive. It's everybody. And I think we need to keep sight of that. There's things in this, your letter, that I would not support in any way. I just don't feel like now is the time for that. But as far as the employee, an employee raises, it's way past time. It's way past time. I don't believe, I don't know how many employees are here, but I can assure you, as a county employee myself for 27 years, somewhere in that ballpark, 20-something, more than 25 years, I think 27, I can assure you, as a county employee, and again, I'll reference Commissioner Thomas, they will work far more hours than they'll ever get paid. You know, it's just the nature of the beast. They understand it going in, you're not going to get paid for every hour that you're, you're there. It just doesn't happen. But they choose to be there, and they choose to do the job. Yes, they can choose to do something else and go in another career field. Thank God they don't. You know, there's going to be a void. Older people like myself soon to retire, hopefully. There's going to be a void. We need these young people. We need these young people in these offices, in these jobs. And I would just ask that everybody would consider that and consider where we're at, and as Commissioner Brown so eloquently stated, where we're headed. Thank you.
Commissioner Jason Sanders.
I'll be short. I was appointed to this seat two years ago, and I made a commitment that day that I would do what's best for the county. I mean, we can break that down with many different directions, but today, we're going to break it down, employees. We have a problem we need to address across the board. Seven years I spent in the sheriff's office, five years in probably the worst jail in the state of Tennessee as a corrections officer. I've been spit on. I've had urine throwed on me. We don't get paid, they don't get paid enough for that. And I'm only going to say one department, because that's the only one I've worked for. But I'll say this, we've always heard county employees, hey, we'll get you next year. Hey, we'll do something next year. I think that year has come. I think this is the time to address the situation that needs to be addressed. And as commissioners, we took an oath to address that situation, and today's the day. Y'all take that in consideration, and thank y'all.
Commissioner Thomas.
Based on the human resources study, it says in here that there is 300 or 438 personnel, 360 are full-time, 78 part-time. And when we talk about this salary study, that includes the fee offices, everybody, is that?
At the full-time level, yes.
So they did address everybody.
Right, there would be some adjustment for part-time.
And y'all heard me say, over the past 10, 12 years, this is your army. When something goes wrong in Bedford County, these are the people who get out there and meet the needs of the people who support them with their tax dollars. There's not a one out there that's ever made a call that these people hadn't responded to and supported, got their needs met, whether it was a disaster, a death in the family, a fire, a flood. I've seen these people risk their lives. And it's hard. I've got 41 years in the fire service, and my department, along with a lot of these other departments, is flipping over every five years. I lost nine employees in one year. How can I ever get somebody led to fill my shoes? You want to put a five-year person in my position, who has no firefighting experience other than what they got from a classroom? That scares me. We can't, we can't get the next leader in our departments. They don't stay. They move on.
Thank you. And I would say that, you know, obviously, the study is not perfect, but looking at that with the finance department, we spent 12 hours straight trying to go through and look at how that all fit into the study. And that's how we established that we believe that's an excellent starting point. And that's how we established that we believe that's an excellent starting point. Will it be perfect? No. Will there be somebody unhappy with it? Absolutely. But it goes a long ways toward a correction. And I'd keep in mind, talking about as money, the dollar grows and the values, there is some dollars more that come into the budget every year simply off of growth, not the rate change, but growth. And we've done everything we can to adjust salaries in hot spots within the budgets every year with those dollars and the request of the departments. And that's why we show you what we put in and we show you what's not in. And those are tough decisions, but our obligation, in my view, as your mayor, is to give you a balanced budget to look at, to start from, and then from there, plan what you're gonna do. And so the 32 cents is, would be a pay correction for, across the system. Commissioner Yaaki.
I want to address the process of how we got here. Budget and finance meets each month. We had multiple budget hearings. Commissioner Thomas is usually there, Commissioner Vick's usually there, the four of us on finance, Commissioner Pinson is usually there. We went through the budget process where people submit their budgets. It's then looked at, discussed, talked about. And then at one meeting then, after everybody has kind of said what they were gonna say, we vote as a finance committee on the recommendation. And I want everyone in this audience to understand, every person on that finance committee meeting that night, that afternoon, voted for the tax rate that was presented at the commission meeting last month. Every person, the mayor, four commissioners sitting there, Dr. Garrett, highway superintendent, all voted for this budget. That ended up being July, June the 7th. We walked out of there. No one followed me to my car, threw themselves in front of it, pulled at my coat tails, screaming and hollering. We left out of there with a motion to send to the county commission. In one week, suddenly, we are at the apocalypse and the world is going to end and all chaos broke loose. And social media fired up, got in on it and created a lot of misinformation. A lot of things were said, true and untrue. And within a week of walking out of that budget hearing, it changed. When I first came on the commission, Paul Parker told me, the last thing you want to do is change the budget that has been sent from finance when you get to the commission floor because it gets, starts getting confusing and you really don't know what you're talking about or you really may not know what you're voting for. I have not seen the study. We got it during the hearings. I have heard the overviews and so forth. I have not heard from one constitutional office person that what their people would get 1% or 30% is what they're accepting. I mean, is that okay? Is that good enough? When you have a study done, when you have a study done, then that, you take that study and incorporate it and mesh it into your thoughts and wishes. And as Mr. Ferrer said, to my knowledge, that has not been done. All of a sudden, we've just somewhere agreed and the letter came out of that. But I want everyone in the audience to know that for most of us, we have not seen the complete study, nor has that study, I want to say blessed by the, all the departments, all the constitutional offices. So you're asking us to vote on something that I don't know exactly what that is gonna mean. And that goes for at least two of those things that were on the mayor's office. But I want everybody to understand, especially those of us on finance, we made a motion, all members on that finance committee sent it to the commission, 100% unanimous, and we left out of there. You know, this all breaks my heart. The whole thing breaks my heart. It's like it's a perfect storm. We're still getting over COVID. Now we have the recession. Now gas is $4 and something. Everything, the study didn't come in till late. Social media jumped in and we've got all this hype and mistrust and misinformation out there. I don't know of anything that could be added to the mix right now. But when you vote on something and it has not been through the committee and everything has been aired as to what you're voting on, it has been, I went back and looked, it has been at least, because I ran out of time, at least 20 years since there was a motion brought to the commission. I don't know that there ever was, but I went back at 20, 20 years. A motion has never been put to the commission to change the tax rate that came from finance. And I want everybody to think about that because you're setting a precedence right here tonight.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Well, to me, it sounds like that we probably ought to recess this meeting, send this study to, back to the finance committee and y'all come back with a recommendation.
You certainly can vote on that. One thing I would give you caution about, if you recess and we miss the deadline, you can't borrow money and we can't enter into contracts. You've got two big things hovering over you. One is borrowing money for schools and interest rates moving daily. And number two is the contract for the tack-in system. That contract is being held till July the 2nd. We have till the 2nd to sign that or we'll get an increase on it. Now, you're welcome to do whatever.
The 2nd falls on a Saturday, the 4th is on a Monday. We got tomorrow and we got the Thursday. You know, I, you know, I'm like everybody else. It ought to go through committee. We need to know where this money's going. We got two days to get it done. And if we have to stay up here the next 12 hours, I'm good with it.
So is there a 2nd to recess? Is that a motion to recess?
You know, I don't know how the other commissioners feel. I'd like to hear some others, but, and Linda's right, you know, this could get, go haywire if we make a change tonight to what's been presented by the finance committee. This way, the finance committee can come back with a different, with the same recommendation or a different recommendation. But we all know what we need to do here and I think a lot of us are willing to do it, but it does need to go through committee.
Commissioner Sanders, Julie Sanders.
Commissioner Thomas, I totally agree with you. I think that a lot of us do not feel real comfortable with everything right now. And this is a really big decision and I think we want to do the right thing for everybody, for the property tax, for the people that are property owners, for our employees. We need to do the right thing, period. And I'm like you, I'm willing to do whatever and get it done so that we, you know, get it done by the deadline. So I would second what you're saying.
And I don't think promising them that we'll do it, we're gonna do $1.95 this year and we promise, we'll promise you next year we'll address it. A lot of them are still waiting on next year that's been here 40 years.
I agree. I understand.
Mr. Chairman, just a parliamentary inquiry. If we do a recess, we need to make certain that we do recess with a date and time certain on there so that when we recess, we know we're coming back at a certain time so that we do not adjourn this meeting because that would require a notice. So as long as we are in recess and we are at date and time certain, that we can meet our deadlines of the, to get to the comptroller, our budget in time, I would, no, no notice, as long as we're in recess, there is no notice required because we're still in recess.
Push your button there, please, sir.
Yes, he stated that correct. If we adjourn, we set the meeting tonight, public notice, we can notice more if we want to and we can come back. If we recess, if we adjourn, you start all over with the notice process.
Question. Mr. Gallagher.
Can the finance committee meet without public notice during that recession?
Mr. Chairman, I think we could meet as a committee of the whole.
I'm looking at you.
I think the only workable way to avoid that problem is to recess this meeting on a short fuse, bring everybody back, right? It is going to be a three-way circular queue attached, but that's, but you don't have the stomach part, just stay at home. And then once that's worked through, you kind of, now, committee.
That's about the only way we can do it and meet the notice requirements that are, that are set forth in the code.
And Mr. Mayor, to be fair, what we'd be doing is opening up the budget process. So, you know, we got a thing from Dr. Garrett on school issues. There's some other things out there. And I think, I think to be fair, you're gonna have to really be fair. And, and the process that we usually do is not being done.
Talking about if we were to recess. Correct.
I agree. I call for question.
Stop in debate when you agree on what, that we should recess or that we should vote on the rate that's on the floor? You have a motion in the second on the floor.
We should vote on the rate.
Okay. Should call for the question.
On the budget as it's presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, it's already a motion in the second on the floor to pass the rate as it is. Everybody, you understand that? That would be the 1.9652. The question in the second was to stop debate. Are you ready to stop debate and vote? Okay, does everybody understand what you're voting on?
A yes vote?
Would be?
A $1.96.
52.
52.
Yeah, correct. Current, same as current rate.
A no would be, no, um, that rate.
Correct, right, correct. Does everybody understand that? So yes would be you are in agreement with setting the rate at $1.9652 or the current rate. And no, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Does that mean if we vote no on this rate, we would have to have a recess?
No.
To discuss it?
Either, you would either, it would either not pass and you would have to offer another Or it simply wouldn't pass and then you would be back to needing to set a tax rate. Will you agree with that? Okay. So yes would be, Commissioner Ferris.
So if the rate doesn't pass as is, there's not an option to recess and for finance to study this? I mean, is the rate gonna have to be put on the floor tonight, right now? If we go this route?
It's on the floor right now. Motion in the second to approve the tax rate as is.
Okay, if that tax rate doesn't pass, what's the next step in the process?
Right.
At that point, you got several options, recesses more, or I guess you can trigger something else back up tonight. That's kind of a blind shot, but the finance committee cannot meet without the notice. We can recess this meeting and meet the requirements of notice. And then somebody better start doing a lot of work in the meantime, or we're gonna just roll around and we will not have a budget later this time. Consequences of that.
What is the consequence? You didn't finish, the July 2nd, what happens if we don't make that date?
While you're in continuing resolution, and we can get Robert up there to be the expert if you don't object to that, we cannot borrow money and we cannot enter into contracts, correct?
That's right. We cannot borrow money and we've got a new school coming online or getting ready to. We cannot sign the contract on the community wing because that is, you're on a continuing budget. That means you can only spend what you spent in July the year before. That wasn't in there, so you can't do that. It also shuts down your federal programs for schools because they have a resolution in your packet that allows them to go to the state and get the budget approved. That's why we do that. If that resolution's not passed and the budget's not passed, then they have no budget. So we can't pay those employees. There can be no step increases. Everybody's the same as last year.
And Mr. Chairman, may I?
Only one more item is the agreement on the radio system. That is actually July 1st that we have, we have to sign that because their year-end is July 2nd. So if we don't sign that, then that bid is out and you may have to rebid it and that means the cost may go up and there's no extra funding there.
And Mr. Daniels, doesn't, isn't there a teacher pay raise that comes in on July 1st from the state as well?
Well, they, they will give us the money, but you can't give it to the teachers until the budget's passed.
The current budget, the current budget we're voting on does have a 1% step raise in it, so that would...
Correct. Yeah, the standard 1% that you passed every year, isn't there, correct?
May I say something to that? That 1% is on top of what you had last year, so you can't pay that either because it wasn't in the prior year budget.
Commissioner Sweeney.
So I want to ask a question. If we vote no on the current budget, why can't we go through each line item tonight? Because we will not dictate the raise. All we're saying is if the 32 and 1/2 cent raise is put into place, then the mayor or the mayor's committee will dictate how that, those funds are spread out. I mean, we've only got four or five things to go over. I would like to make one point. If you look at what the pay raise is overall at 32 and 1/2 and our average house is 250,000 in Bedford County now, that's about $180 to $200 annually. We're telling employees that are underpaid by $10,000 to $15,000, that's more important than you getting a pay schedule that's equivalent to surrounding counties currently. Not with the raises they're getting, but what they're getting currently. I think we really need to think about that, that we're asking them to sacrifice $10,000 to $15,000, but us as taxpayers not sacrifice $160.
All right. There has been a question called for. So the motion on the floor is to approve the current tax rate. Again, I'll read it to you. The general was $1.10, highways was 6 cents, general purpose schools was 62 cents, general debt service was 15 cents and capital projects was 3.52 cents, making the 1.9652, which is the exact same current tax rate that we have. If you vote yes, you're saying yes to the 1.9652, to leave it like it is. If you vote no, then you're saying no to that. When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer? Mr. Ferris?
No.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
No.
Commissioner Jason Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Julie Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Vick?
No.
Nine ayes, nine noes.
So the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution here that fixes the tax levy at $2.3552. I'd like to introduce, a clerk has it on her desk, please.
All right, read it off, sir. Well, we need a second. Well, you gotta read it off so we can get a second. Second.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution fixes the tax rate at 2.3552. The general at 1.46, the highway public works 0.09, the general purpose schools 0.62, general debt service 0.15, capital project 0.035, total tax rate 2.35. I'm asking for a second in the floor.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, we got a motion in the second. We're open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we've discussed this item and...
Are you calling for the question?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think we're on debate right now.
All right, sir, I thought you were telling me you already debated it.
I think we have debated it.
All right, sir.
I think we understand that we need the component for the pay raise here for our employees. I think we've talked about the study, I think we've talked about economic development, I think we've talked about why people sent us up here four years to see this change. I understand the situation about coming through the finance committee, I must take exception to one thing, and that is that it was not discussed. It was discussed at finance committee, and you have a copy of the notice where it was not approved at the finance committee, but it was discussed. So, Mr. Chairman, the 2.3552 takes in consideration all those matters, it takes in consideration the pay raise, the pay adjustment that we have discussed in there, uh...
We, we have this document, would you like to hand it out to each of you?
Yeah, the clerk could distribute, please, to each one of them, so we can see that, please. I'm sorry.
All right, everybody have the document in front of you? I'll read off to you, uh, what he's proposing. General, $1.46, highway, 0.9 cents, general purpose schools, 62 cents, general debt service 15 cents, and capital, uh, county capital projects, the 3.52 cents, for a total of So, there's a motion and a second on the floor, again, we're open for discussion.
I do have a question about what we just previously voted on, and on this one too, I suppose, uh, but we do have county employees voting on, um, their own budget, so...
You're voting on the tax rate currently.
Right.
Please, sir.
Let, let me address that. The vote that we just took, of course, it's a deadlock, and it's passed, so that issue is moot. Under the current C-TAS ruling, that declaration is no longer required, however, it is still embedded in our local rules. Now, the closeout sentence in our local rule says if any rule herein is contrary to the state, federal, et cetera, et cetera laws, it's void, but to, to avoid that problem, the, I believe it's three or four potential county employees should make that declaration, and you have it in front of you, and that eliminates that as a problem. And, and the, the law is clear that if you vote that, and it's not challenged before the next piece of business, it's okay. So, the last vote is, is over, but this one, that's, that's a very good point, and I was really asleep at the switch a minute ago, so, uh, each of those, three or four, need to read that declaration. Good point.
All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Julie Sanders.
Um, Commissioner Vic, I have a question about this. So, um, I'm looking at it, and it looks like what, what we've done here is increased the general by 36 cents, and highway and public works by 3 cents, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and what I guess I'm trying to figure out here is, does that mean that the 4-cent tax increase from the economic development has been taken out?
I'm sorry, the way we have done that is we have, uh, put in the $200,000 matching grant, we have 200, we're adding the additional 200 that was not included in the original budget. We are putting the 210 back into the partnership, we are putting 100,000 into the business part, that is to pay for the expenses for the survey and legal cost. We are also putting $91,500 into our volunteer firefighter pay and sending program, $25,000 for tourism, and there is additional funding in there for the highway department, so that we can accommodate the expenses that they are incurring for lubricants, hot mix, as well as gasoline. And it is now blended into that number, so that, it's kind of a hard way to describe it, but this is the way we have to do it for the tax rate on there. And then the, the following pages will make the, the necessary adjustments as we, once we establish the tax rate.
Okay, so, it, it, it includes the 32 cents then for the employees, correct?
It does.
Okay, and what about the, and the 7 cents for the cost of living?
It does not.
Does not, okay, so that's what it's not including?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I personally, um, would disagree. I feel like that the, I'm just gonna say my piece here, I think that there's no doubt we need to take care of our employees, um, but I don't think the taxpayers right now can afford to do all of this, but I think we definitely need to take care of these employees, and I don't know exactly how we redo this, because I didn't write this up, but, um...
Are you making an amendment to his?
I would like to amend it, where we cover the 32 cents for the employees, and not address the, I mean, I know economic development needs to be addressed eventually, but right now, I think this is not the year, that's just my opinion, and, um, and I think just the 32 cents only is what I would amend it to.
Is there a second to that?
I don't think we could amend that, I think based on what I was untold at the beginning of the meeting, that I could not amend the original, uh...
There's a motion and a second, and you're, and you are the main motion, somebody's gonna have to second that, and then you're gonna have to agree to it.
No, I cannot agree to that.
Well, she ain't got a second yet.
She's got one now, second.
Second.
Okay, so you have a second to, and, and what you're seconding is, you, your position would be the general fund, instead of 146, would be 142, and the public works would stay at 6 cents, schools at 62, 15 for debt service, and the 3.52 for, uh, capital projects. Am I reading that right?
That's correct, yes.
So, how many, so how many cents is that total? What does that then make it? That's 32 cents on 196.
Yes, 32.
You know, I got...
Got it written down, let's see, it would be, what, $2.28, well, 2.2852, I believe, is that correct?
No, it wouldn't be 2.8.
I may have misadded.
Can't be 2.8, let's see, that's 6...
2.28.
2, 2.8, yeah, there you go, 2.28.
2.2852 is what I have.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I'm, all right, and there was a second to this amendment. Now, I'm asking Commissioner Vic, who's got the motion on the floor, do you accept that amendment?
No, I do not accept that amendment.
All right, so now we gotta vote on the amendment, so...
And did your, I'm sorry, did that include the lobbyists, or was that not?
This includes everything, but I think Commissioner Sanders is doing is changing some of the numbers in here, which is gonna make it very confusing, that's why we need to debate the entire thing, to see if we can come up with some kind of conclusion, that's why we needed to have a committee of the whole, so we could discuss this, but we can do it however the chair wants to do.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the parliamentarian, and to instruct me what to do, there's amendment, but he's not accepting the amendment, so we vote on the amendment?
You vote on the amendment, and, uh, if the amendment fails, you're back to the main motion, which is Mr. Vic's motion, if the amendment passes, then...
Then that's the main motion, and there'll have to be another vote?
And technically, you vote the main motion again, and that, you break that.
Right, so there's...
And if I'm correct, you went ahead and you changed the numbers exactly, so it's already spelled out, correct? Like, to break it down into the different funds?
I, I just read that off, assuming this was, that's, that's why I was asking you for clarification, the only number that you want to modify from the original number was the 32, you wanted it to go to 32 cents, not...
Correct.
36.
You got it.
And you, did you want to, uh, leave the increase for highways? He had additional...
No, I just don't think we really can do that right now, that's my opinion.
Right, so strictly the 32 cents on top of the current rate, so...
To adjust the 32, down to the 32 cents, does that come out of general?
Yeah, she's wanting to add 32... 32 cents on top of, it'll be 142, uh, 142.
142, so it's reduced by 4 cents.
From, from the motion that's on the floor.
Correct.
Mayor, I, I have one comment, I wanna make sure Julie understands that the money for, that's under economic development, the 200,000 is a match with the city to get a $2 million grant to get sewer improvements into the industrial park, so that cost is probably gonna go up 30 to 40 percent in another year, just like we've seen the schools go from 24 million to 35 million. I just wanna make sure you understood the difference between...
So, on the floor, you have a motion and a second for the amendment, and he's not accepting it, so, when your name's called, you're gonna vote for or against, if you vote yes, you're for the amendment to reduce it to the 32 cents, and not what Commissioner Vic put forward. If you vote no, uh, then you're rejecting the amendment, which will put you back to the main motion, which was what Commissioner Vic put forward at the 235.52.
And then we can make another amendment, if you want.
Okay, do you understand what you're doing? If you vote yes, you're for the amendment put forward by Commissioner Julie Sanders, which would just add 32 cents to the current tax rate, particularly in the general fund, the other numbers would stay the same, highways, purpose schools, debt service, and capital projects. So, everybody, I'm giving you all the time you need to ask questions, you understand what you're voting on?
I was asking, uh, Mr. Bobo, do, uh, will I need to read the disclaimer here?
Uh, y- y- yes, read, read the disclaimer, each of the three or four of you that...
Yes.
Before you vote. All right, so, when your, when your name's called, vote for or against, this is for the amendment, if you vote yes, you're for the amendment, if you vote no, you're not for the amendment.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Mr. Brothers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Castleman? Mr. Epperson?
Um, no.
Commissioner Farrer?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Because I'm an employee of the Bedford County Sheriff's Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents, constituents and citizens this body represents, yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
No.
Commissioner Pinson?
No.
Mr. Jason Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County EMS, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County, I have a conflict of the interest in the proposal about to be voted on, however, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my constituents and obligation and to the citizens this body represents, no.
Commissioner Vic?
No.
Commissioner Yaki?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens of this body represent.
Nine ayes, nine noes.
All right, so the amendment fails, and you're back to the main motion, which Commissioner Vic put forward, which was the 146 for the general fund, 9 cents for highways, 62 cents for general purpose schools, 15 cents for debt service, and the 3.52 cents for capital projects, for a total of $2.3552.
Mr. Chairman, may I request a recess for 20 minutes, please?
A second.
I call for question.
We got a motion and a second to recess. There's a motion and a second to recess for 20 minutes. All in favor? Any opposed, raise your hand if you're against it. How many do we have?
One, two, three, four, five, six, again, so I guess it's...
So, we're recessing for 20 minutes?
Yep.
All right, 20-minute recess. All right. 20-minute recess.[281.12]
Guys, get back here, we'll get back in session. All right, I think we're missing. All right, who are we missing? Is he, has he left, or, okay, all right, so we'll take just another minute, and then who's right over here on Anita? Okay. All right, and who else are we, there's Anita, and there's Mr., all right, we're right on, there you go, some things are important. All right, so we'll declare ourselves back in session from recess, and motion is second on the floor is for, I'll read it one more time, general sessions, $1.46, highway public works, nine cents, general purpose schools, 62 cents, general debt service, 15 cents, and then county capital projects, 3.52 cents, for a total of $2.3552. Are you in agreement with that, Commissioner Vic?
I am.
All right, is there any other comments or questions? So, if you vote yes, you're voting to accept this new rate being put before you. If you vote no, you are rejecting this new rate. Do you understand that? Commissioner Ferris?
Okay, I'm a little unclear on what's included in this rate. I mean, I understand, I read here, but is there any, any type of breakdown on where this money's going, I mean, is, and I think the question was asked earlier, is the lobbyist money in this rate?
Yes.
And all of those things?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
Yeah, we're motion second.
The way, the way we're working that is, there is a $200,000 matching grant that we have to have for our $1.8 million sewer plan that we have been approved for with the Tennessee Department of, I think it's TDEC is who has that. We are asking for the 200,000 for that, we're asking for $210,000 that goes into the Shelbyville-Bedford County Partnership, and the reason we're needing that money is, they're asking for one, I think, 110 for their operating costs there, and then we were going to include the work for the Ackerman Group, which is a governmental consulting group that is on partnership with the city of Shelbyville. We have asked them to assist us with our federal grant application process. They are a nationally recognized law firm, they work Capitol Hill, we have worked every single angle to get all the state money that we can, we have no other options available to us, we desperately need water and sewer for our infrastructure and bridges and roads, the only option we have is federal money. The city of Shelbyville has engaged them, we are going in halves with them since they are our partner, and let me also say, the city of Shelbyville has been outstanding as a partner with us in our inter-local agreement that we have with them, and so we're very proud to have them as part of that, 210, that is included. There is a $25,000 line item there that goes towards tourism that we have to work with on our Main Street project that we would like to be, work with, which is a state-recognized program. Our 231 North Business Park, we're asking for $100,000 for that, that would include the expenses that we have incurred to date. Now, I have had several questions people have posed to me, and if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, about the Project Cardinal, Project Turquoise, on where we are, and I think I've had some people even go so far as to say, this isn't even a real project, that we're making all this up. I can assure you that the invoices are correct, and as are the invoices for the legal fees and the survey. So, if it was, be okay with you, Mr. Chairman, could we ask the county attorney to say what he can say about where we are with Project Cardinal and the status of that, to the degree that you can disclose?
You prepared to make a statement?
I'm pausing a little bit to be sure that I don't disclose too much, and I'm looking back at the room, but we, we have had conversations with Cardinal today. I have a new set of documents on my iPad that I'm gonna look at tonight, which is a tweak of our original IDB documents. If you made me bet, not being a very successful betting kind of fellow, I'm thinking we're 95% there, and I believe these guys are now anxious to get it done. I believe that they're, that the principals are about as tired of their lawyers as Mr. Hooper is of his. So, I think, I think we're just within a couple of weeks of being right where we need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize to the commission, because I think there might be some degree of apprehension about what we can say and what we can't say, but we have been explicitly informed by ECD, the governor's office, that there is no communication that we can have with any contact or information with them to jeopardize anything with this deal, and so I, it is very difficult for us to come before a public body and, and listen to the questions that we can't respond to, knowing that we can't respond to, and so I'm sorry that I can't be more forthcoming, I'm sorry.
All right, and Commissioner Ferris?
Just to follow up on that, I'm trying to put this in an eloquent way and not in my normal way. A little while ago, we were all concerned about employee raises. Now, employee raises are being held hostage for everything else that we want. I understand $200,000 for the matching grant, makes perfect sense. I do not understand the rest of it. I, I don't believe, I, I'm, there's more, there's a lot of won't, I'm not sure how much need. I, I guess my question is, are, I mean, how serious are we about taking care of our employees? Are we serious enough to do this, or vote a raise for the employees? Or are we gonna let that be held hostage because of all the other fat that's been added?
All right, and one thing I would clear up for you is, I was just speaking to the finance director, and if I misspeak, you throw something. If you guys pass, gals, folks, pass this new tax rate, it will generate, and it will automatically become revenue in the budget, but the actual expenditures of where that money will go will have to be amended in the July regular commission meeting. So, you'll have the revenue if you pass this, but you, but your ability to spend it anywhere will depend on a budget amendment by this same body in July, or else it can't be spent, whether that be for raises or for any other particular item that you're trying to actually expend. So, am I correct? Okay.
Clarification, Mr. Chairman, clarification on that. If we appropriate this money, then we can direct where to spend it. If we don't appropriate this money, then we can't direct where we spend it, that's what you're saying, correct?
If, if you don't appropriate the money, you don't have the money, but what, but if you vote for this rate, you will generate additional revenue beyond what was in the budgets, or that are in front of you. By doing that, if I understand from my finance folks, that will automatically change the revenue line items of the budget, but it does not change the expenditure line items to actually spend those dollars. There will have to be a budget amendment and an agreement by the commission to expend the money in the particular line item that you're trying to put it in.
And that's what Commissioner Sanders was asking about, how you, the budget amendment can reflect that in there.
Yes, in a budget amendment, then you will be stipulating where you're putting it, am I correct? You can't spend revenue without being budgeted in an expenditure line item. Right.
So, Mr. Mayor, that gives us time then to go back and really study things.
Correct.
You just have to have the tax rate approved and into the state.
So that you have the revenue, then you can, right, then you can amend the budgets as, as we often need to do for other reasons, correct? Again, finance director, you agree with that statement? Okay. Commissioner Mark Thomas?
So, so that I understand this, if this passes, then that'll go back to the finance committee, the finance committee can study that, and then plug these numbers into the appropriate line item, and then make that as an amendment?
As an amendment.
Bring that back to the county commission for us to either vote up or down.
Correct. Correct.
But, but we would have passed the tax rate irregardless tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. You will have, you will generate the revenue with your tax rate, whatever you set it to be.
We would pass a tax rate and not know where we're gonna spend it?
Well, he's told you where he'd like to spend it.
That question.
Commissioner Julie Sanders, and then I'll get to it.
Can Commissioner Ferris or anyone else amend it with taking that out? I guess, like we talked about it, you have to take that cent or two cents out, is, well, it's not four cents, not if you're keeping the sewer, it depends on what you're doing.
It's less than two. If the penny's worth 128,000, and you're trying to get to 200,000, it'd be slightly more than a penny. Commissioner Anderson?
But if this is going back to finance, that would mean, it wouldn't be the July commission meeting, you've got a finance in July, and back to the commission in August.
Correct, because, that's right, that's right, because it would go to the July finance committee, and would actually be the August commission meeting. Right, am I, is it correct?
But does it keep us in line with what we need to do for the school and 911?
Because you will have, step up, but because we would have passed it. I just need to wake him up. Try it again.
Yes, that would be correct. If you pass the budget, then you can come back and amend it later for, you know, where you want it to spend, but everything will be on go, because we have a, we have a budget passed, we can borrow money, we can do all the other stuff we need.
Right, the problem is if we continue resolution or continue the current budget. If we pass a new budget, then we can expand according to that.
That's right.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about? All right. All right, so we know the motion that's on the floor, there's a second, we've had discussion, you're about to vote. If you vote yes, you're for this new tax rate of 23552. If you vote no, you're against it. When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Brothers?
No.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Mr. Epperson?
No.
Commissioner Farrer?
No.
Mr. Ferris?
Because I'm an employee of the Bedford County Sheriff's Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson? Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County EMS, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Because I'm, I'm an employee of Bedford County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answers only to my constituents and my obligations and to the citizens of the body I represent. My vote is yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to the conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents. No.
Does anyone wish to change your vote?
I'll pass.
So, nine ayes, eight noes, one pass.
So, it doesn't pass, takes 10 yeses to pass it, so now we're back to, somebody wanna offer another amendment, or?
I want a vote on the original resolution.
All right, uh.
Resolution 23-1.
Parliamentarian says he don't think you can revoke that one since it's been, yeah, you can change the numbers, maybe. Commissioner Sweeney?
I make a motion that we pass the budget excluding the lobbyist and excluding the 210,000.
I'll second that.
All right, now, how many pennies? I need to talk to you about pennies, if you're gonna do that. So, how many pennies would you back off from there? Three pennies?
210 plus the 120, I believe, for the lobbyist.
Yeah, so 128,000 for a penny would be 370, so you'd take three pennies off of his original, which is, so would you go to 143 for general? He's right now currently at 146?
Correct.
All right, and then would you leave highways at nine?
Yes.
All right, and the general purpose is 62 cents, which is where it's been, general debt service 15, that's where it's been, all right, and then capital projects is 3.52 cents, you would leave those the same?
Correct.
So, you would be backing three cents off of the 23552 to make it 23252.
Correct.
You agree with that?
Do you follow that?
Is that, the person that made the second to this, are you in agreement with that breakdown?
I am.
Okay, so we've got motion as second on the floor, and this is, would now be the main motion, since the other motion failed, so we're open for discussion.
And what was the final tax rate?
Would be 23252. It, it would be three cents off of the general fund based on the earlier proposal, of 146 would move to 143, and the other numbers would stay the same.
I just need clarification on the 210,000 dollars you're backing off from, what was that allocated for?
That's to the partnership.
And then the 100,000 for the lobbyist?
Correct.
Which is how you come to three?
Two.
Uh, no, 300 and?
330,000.
Right, right.
But clarification, Mr. Chairman, I believe the 210 included the 100,000 for the lobbyist in there, or for the governmental affairs group, the, what did?
The 210 included the governmental affairs 100.
210, I'm not following you.
That's correct. Commissioner Vic's correct, the 210 was part of it's for the partnership, Matt, and then the other part is for the lobbyist.
Okay.
100 plus 110.
But that's what you're taking out?
Correct.
Right, so, and then that puts the rate at 2.3252. In agreement with that? Okay, does everybody understand, Commissioner Gallagher?
So, now, just I forgot my question, that's, you're taking out, well, what was I gonna ask? I'm sorry.
The, the earlier motion was for $1.46 in the general, and they're proposing to move it, the general to $1.43, taking three cents away from it.
Oh, I know what I was gonna ask. Is that taking out the legal and survey services as part of the partnership?
No.
No, we have to have that.
Right, and actually, that's in other funds, some of that, anyway.
I just wanna make sure Commissioner Gallagher understands, we already have 100,000 in there for the partnership in the original budget.
Yes. Okay, does everybody understand what you're voting on? If you vote yes, oh, Commissioner Ferris? Okay, all right, so if you vote, Commissioner Epperson?
I'm sorry, so that still includes, this still includes the employee raises, the sewer four out there? Okay.
And two additional cents for, no, three additional cents for highways.
Okay.
Correct? Okay.
So, what is the proposed tax rate?
$2.3222 cents. All right, do we understand where we are? All right, so if you, when you vote yes, you're voting for this new rate, if you vote no, you're voting against this rate. So, when your name's called, vote for or against, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Mr. Brothers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Castleman? Mr. Epperson?
No.
Mr. Farrer? Commissioner Ferris?
Because I'm an employee of the Bedford County Sheriff's Department, I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County EMS, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County, I have a conflict of interest in this proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answers only to my conscience and to my obligation and to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents. My vote is yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Because I'm an employee of Bedford County Board of Education, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents. No.
Does anyone wish to change your vote?
I'll pass.
Pass the same as no.
12 ayes, five noes, one pass.
All right, so the motion passes, so you got to see government at its best work here for you tonight. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 23-2 and its appropriation for various funds. Does this one require any adjustment?
No, because that'll be in the amendment when you do it in next year.
Okay, all right, we need a, we need a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, we've got motion as second, we're open for discussion. Motion was, was it Janice? Did you make the motion? Okay. Mark, you don't recognize this was? Okay, got you. All right, so we have a motion as second, we're open for discussion. All right, all right, when your name's called, vote for or against, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer? Commissioner Ferris?
Does this require a reading again? Thank you, Mr. Bobo, appreciate it. Yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Commissioner Jason Sanders?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? 12 ayes, zero noes.
All right, next on the agenda is Resolution 23-3 and its appropriation to nonprofit charitable organizations.
Motion to approve as amended in the levy.
Second.
Not, not necessary? Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, we got a motion as second, open for discussion. When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Mr. Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer? Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? 20 ayes, zero noes.
All right, next on the agenda. All right, next item on the agenda, Resolution 23-4, and this is the additional compensation required for the clerks that take extra courts.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion as second, any comments or questions? When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer? Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson? Commissioner Jason Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? 18 ayes, zero noes.
Next item, 23-5 Resolution, that's the education incentive payments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion as second, any comments or questions? All right, when your name's called, vote for or against, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Mr. Castleman? Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Mr. Farrer? Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox? Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Julie Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Vic?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? 18 ayes, zero noes.
All right, next resolution is 23-6, that's for federal grants.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second was Jason Sanders. Third district has showed up. All right, any questions or comments? All right, when your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Castleman? Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrer?
Uh.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.